City Commission meeting for April 14th will come to order, please. Roll call.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Gault.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kahler.
Present. Our invocation tonight is Michael Jenkins with the relevant church youth leader. Is Michael here yet? Okay, we'll go on with our pledge of allegiance. Tonight we have Brant Green and he's a Paducah Tillman High School senior. Welcome, Brant. Did I pronounce your name right? Bronte. Welcome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And tell us what, are you in the speech club or anything at Tillman?
I'm on the speech team. I'm the debate captain.
You've been here before.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for coming again.
Thank you.
City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
There are none.
I have a few presentations tonight. On February 24th, Danny Mullen, PGA of Paxton Park Golf Course in Paducah was honored with the Golf Professional of the Year Award. The Golf Professional of the Year Award is one of the highest honors that the professional golfers associations can bestow on a working club professional whose total contributions to the game best exemplify the complete PGA professional. Danny, if you'll come forward, please. So, we appreciate Danny, your many years of work and dedication to Paxton Park Golf Course, and because of all your service, I'm honored to present you with the highest award that the city of Paducah gives, and that's the Mayor's Award of Merit.
Thank you.
I'm sure you have a wall you can hang this on.
Will. Very much.
Oh, thank you so much. You know, Paxton.
We present it the best we can every day in the city of Paducah.
I know that you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the only thing better than shooting 18 under par at the Masters, huh?
And it's my pleasure tonight to present a Duke and Duchess to, just make sure I've got them in line here, to William Sturgis and Wanda Mullen X. Williams. I'd also like to mention Steve Kettler. He couldn't be here tonight, so Danny, if you would make sure that Steve gets that. So, William and Wanda, if you would come forward, please. So, this is our way of saying thank you so much for your years of service to Paxton Park Golf Commission and the wonderful job that you've done there, and I know that you will continue to support Paxton Park. So, Steve, tonight I'm making you a Duke of Paducah, and then I'll read these together.
This is Steve.
Oh, sorry. William. Okay. And Wanda. So, I'm going to read these together to you all. To Wanda Mullen X. Williams, is named a Duchess of Paducah, and Bill Sturgis, a Duke of Paducah. I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities thereto appertaining, in testimony whereof, I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be herein to affix, done at Paducah the 14th day of April in the year of our Lord 2015. And this is just a small token. We really have no way of thanking you properly for all of the service that you've given to the city of Paducah and the Paxton Park Golf Commission. Thank you so much.
It was my honor, and I loved every year of it.
Thank you, Wanda.
An honor and a privilege.
It's my pleasure to present Duke of Paducah to Dr. Jeffrey R.C. If you'll come up, please. Jeff, I just wanted to thank you for your contributions to Paducah through the UK School of Engineering and the many other things that you do for our community. So, tonight I'm making you a Duke. I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities thereto appertaining, in testimony whereof, I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be herein to affix the 2nd day of April 2015.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Do you want to say a little something about the project we're working on?
Yeah, sure. I should be glad to. So, some of you may know, last spring, I traveled to the country of Gabon in Sub-Saharan Africa with Mayor Kahler and my undergraduate research assistant, Ms. Chandra D. Joshi, who's sitting in the back. And we took the time to look for educational opportunities for the UK College of Engineering and partnership opportunities between the city of Lamborana, which was where we visited, and Paducah. And while we were there, we met with a lot of different schools and were looking for ways that the people of Paducah could reach out and improve the healthcare and education in the city of Lamborana. So, Mayor Kahler and I have been working together, along with Ms. Joshi, to raise funds, to send a container with school books and medical supplies. The school books have been donated to us by a variety of local school districts, from the Paducah City Schools to St. Mary High School to McCracken County School System. And we're working with an organization called Supplies Overseas with Louisville, who collects medical supplies from regional hospitals, including Baptist Health System here in Paducah. And so, we are, we have a lot of supplies located at the UK campus in Paducah and are in the process of raising funds to get that sent over to Gabon, so we're hoping to get that sent this summer.
Thank you. And I'm constantly getting emails from Isaac.
Yeah, I am as well. Got one yesterday.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Tonight, we have a presentation by Mary Hammond on the Creative Cities. Mary, if you'll come forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Commission, I'm proud to be here. This has been quite a journey since we first presented Paducah's application to join UNESCO Creative Cities in November 11. Paducah was admitted in November 13, and we went on a roller coaster ride that included many things, including Gabon, which even though we may be part of Creative Cities, UNESCO, and we'll run over this, everybody has to remember, United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization. It's the people, the people of our world. UNESCO has many programs, many that overlap with other programs going on around the world, but two of the big programs, the World Heritage Site, like Mammoth Cave, and the Built Heritage, but the people, and that's where the Creative Cities Network comes in, with the different types of creative cities, if it be the craft and folk art, if it be gastronomy, if it be design, music, what is, what is the culture that brought you together? And you know, our culture here was always changing because of the river and being the 15th state and people coming through here, leaving pieces of themselves that made us who we are, a cross-section of the United States, which puts us in such a perfect position to go out and take our common heritage and connect with the rest of the world, and we've done it very well the last 15 months. The mayor and I went to China, we were the guests, in Suzhou, China, but it was a big city. They call themselves small, but they were 12 million people. But we went to Fabriano, Italy. Laura and I went to Fabriano for the Fabriano Forum, only with the cities of craft and folk art. So, we were there with Santa Fe, Kanazawa, Japan, Hanzu, China. It was a good gathering, deciding how do we work together and what comes along, but we met the master paper maker, because Fabriano is known for their paper, just like Paducah is known for their fiber art. And the fun thing is, they're both come from cotton. So, we have built this relationship and have brought Sandro Tiberi with us, and I'm getting ahead of myself, but I do want to share with you, before I bring Sandro up, that this is our annual report. I want you to look through it. I won't even begin to cover all of the many things that are in here, including Gabon, but there's some wonderful things that I must share, and this is a quote I've used often, and it just speaks to me. Cities are revealed most clearly through their creativity, which prompts understanding of the past and contemplation of possible futures. They are moods and energy, history and aspirations. These often intangibles have great value in city life. With Sandro being here, we've done many things. He taught three classes in paper making at Ruth Backett's class at Tillman. He went to the racial taboo screening and discussions, went to the Power of the Purse Today for BPW, has met with entrepreneurs, businessmen, artists, has engulfed himself in our city. And with each discussion after we leave somebody, we talk about using creativity, understanding the past, working together to learn from the past, build to the future, build communication and working together globally. And I'm just so proud. I feel Paducah, we're the perfect size. We have accessible life. We have accessible arts, culture, and it sets us apart from those bigger cities. I know you've heard me say, the cities that have applied to Creative Cities and have not been admitted, New Orleans, can I even say that out loud, for gastronomy? Tucson for gastronomy? Seattle for literature? And it's not that they don't have a wonderful product, but they're over here doing their thing. Well, you know what? We're doing our thing together. We're doing it with the college, we're doing it with the artists, we're doing it with the schools. We have another visit now out to McCracken County Schools, where they've gotten a grant on how to help the students realize that the market isn't just on Main Street, that the market is around the globe, and how to expand your vision for the future. So, we're in a really good place. It just so happens, our portal right now, our stage, is UNESCO Creative Cities Network, and you know, we're going to go for it. This is just the beginning of our relationship with Sandro and with Fabriano. I think we'll be seeing his mayor here, Juan Carlo, who's probably watching on Facebook to see what we post after this meeting. But Sandro, please come up and tell us a little bit about yourself. But I ask the commission, this is your homework, take this home and read it, be proud, get puffed up. We are almost like a poster child, doesn't that sound weird? But Paducah is that size city that can make it happen. We have friends here, and we reach out and we work together. Look at them all here in this room. And that doesn't happen other places. They're too big. It's not accessible. Our life is good here, the quality. So, Sandro, come add to the quality of our life.
I'm very honored to be here. To me, is, for me, is very emotional to be here and honored. And Fabriano is like Paducah. Just to say, Mary Hammond, and thanks, Mary, for choice, this meeting. And Fabriano has 30,000 people, is very small, but it's very interesting, because around you can find a lot of things, a lot of very beautiful things. I take to you some materials for explaining, and near, very close, we have the Cave of Rassasi, they are very beautiful. We are close to Rome, three hours by car, very close to Florence, two hours by car, and a little far is Venice, but with five hours, you can find Venice. Well, we are in the center of Italy, and I think is a good point to discover Italy. And I'm a paper maker. We are proud to our history, that it was the 13th century, and I'm maybe the future of this job. I open now an academy for teach this art. And for me, is a very important tradition, very important, but it's important to take the tradition and put it in the future, because we must see ahead. For this, in all my product, I think that, okay, I take the tradition and put it in the future. I prepare something for you, and I hope that you'll like this. It's a little piece of Fabriano, little piece of my art, and for end, thank you. Thank you so much for this great opportunity, and I hope that I can aid you to begin an experience with handmade paper making here in Paducah. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well, I know that, Sandro, that you've been to the Paducah School of Art and Design, and you've talked to them about your laboratory and how you make your paper and how you start with the pulp, and that possibly we could have that here in Paducah as well as for one of our areas of art at the Paducah School of Art and Design. So, the paper that you make is such a fine quality, that it's really a lot about economic development between Paducah and Fabriano.
Well, this is the first step for communicate, for join it, and maybe for make a business together.
Right.
Join it is better than alone, for me, and this is a great opportunity for me, for my city, and I hope for Paducah too.
So, I just want to, I want to make you a Duke tonight, too, as a token of our appreciation for you being here, for making the long trip and visiting Paducah. So, I have a Duke of Paducah for you in class. To all to whom these presents shall come, greetings. Know ye that Sandro Tiberia, correct?
Tiberi.
Tiberi, is named a Duke of Paducah. I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities thereto appertaining, in testimony whereof, I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be herein to affix, done at Paducah the 14th day of April in the year of our Lord 2015. So, thank you, and thank your mayor for sending you to us.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commission, Mayor, for your continued support of Paducah Arts Alliance, which allows the Artist in Residence Program, because we've had such fine folks come from around the globe to participate, and we will see many more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this light? Are you?
Yes, it is for you.
Okay. Thank you.
It's my work of art. I think that the watermark is a way to make art, not only for create a logo, and I think that the light, the light, the form of the light, this is for you, and it is a piece of me that remain in Paducah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think we should rotate that around our house. I'll take it first, a couple of weeks, and then...
Okay.
Any questions?
No. Thank you. Enjoy Stomp. Our summer calendar for special events, Molly Tommasello, please come forward. People are interested in what's going on this summer?
I have to do this, I have to do this for you. Now, these little cards that I'm giving you, these are final cuts, they're not in final print, and so they are almost all correct, but there still might be a little changes that you need to look at.
Thank you.
A couple little ones I had to make copies, because I didn't have enough.
That's all right. Thank you. This is pretty.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Clerk, City Manager. Really wanted to tell Mary that I actually second what she was saying, and it's really inspiring to hear her talk about all the community partners and Paducah being just the right size, and all of the opportunities that we have here and events. I know that, as I get further in the presentation, we've actually, Melinda and I have been working closely with some community partners for that very reason, just coming together to kind of show you, just like one little handful of, you know, snapshot of just the summer, of just some things that there are to do here. And I think so many of us that are involved in the community with events, we're constantly amazed, as we're working behind the scenes, just how hard it is not to overlap, or, you know, we do double features all the time. And I know sometimes we hear that we don't know if there's a lot to do in Paducah, but there's just so much to do here, and it's just really a matter of taking the opportunity to out there. And also, we're having some really great marketing, that we're really trying to promote some of these activities to encourage people to get out there and experience these things. So, with just saying that, first of all, you've got a magazine, that is, The Purchase Area Family Magazine. That's just a little article in there, a spread on the farmer's market. It was for the March issue, and we had the cover as one of our marketing strategies this year, and you'll see more of that as the season goes on. The market is, I think it's on a, on a great climb. Last year was a huge success. We had steadily increased numbers throughout the entire season, very happy vendors. We actually had a great start to our Summer 2015 Meeting. Everybody who was there last year has come back, with the exception of one due to an illness, and we've got 15 additional that have signed on. So, right now, we're looking at 30-plus that we already have going into 2015. Originally, I guess, the year before I got here, there were six. So, we, it wouldn't surprise me to make 40 this year or even more, because we have an open enrollment to encourage vendors to come, people to try it out. And the one thing that I find is that, as word gets out there about how popular it's becoming and what great vendors we have, and what a good time it is and a great experience to bring your family and for all ages, you know, I get so many calls from all over Kentucky, and Illinois, and Missouri, and some in Tennessee, and they're like, hey, you know, this is, this is really great, we were at this market, but I'd really like to come try yours. So, when I hear that, that's always encouraging, because it means that word is traveling, that we have some great changes that are underway. Okay. So, Summer 2015, Paducah Farmers Market. This is a little snapshot. You'll see it on your new rack card that you have for the Farmers Market. Our Paducah Farmers Market is public service to support local agricultural artisans, businesses, improve the quality of life in this region. We have amazing vendors that work very hard to bring this community everything from produce, fresh meats baked in artisan goods, fresh flowers, and that's just to name a few. And we are a true community market. We strive for homegrown, home-produced, and we support local business partners as well. This is just a basic collage of photographs from last year, so you can really get an idea of how busy the market is getting and how full. You're going to get swept away, so I feel bad, because sometimes I'm like, I don't have enough pictures, but as I'm flipping through, it's hard to pick and choose, because we had so many wonderful moments from our Saturdays. A few community partners, like Mary was saying, this community is full of wonderful partners, and I truly think that's part of the key to continuing success. At some of our markets, we have Hudson out there providing tractors and supporting the education on farming. We've got master gardeners, we have food prep volunteers from the extension office, we have our wonderful musicians, and this town is, is full of them. So, there is a great opportunity to showcase some of their talent there as well. We have the library that comes in as partnerships, we have local bakeries. As you can see, Barbecue &amp; More was a full supporter out there, too, for our mini celebration Saturdays, and set up and said, you know, they were amazed at the people that would come and just be like they had never been to their shop on Broadway. And even if it was just 10 people, that was exceptional, because they were down there the next week. You know, they didn't realize that they carried all this Kentucky Proud sauces and barbecue mixtures. So, that was something that is really exciting. Quick snapshot, Farmers Market scheduled this year, April 25th to October 31st. April 25th is going to be a very soft opening, meaning vendors can start setting up. Our actual grand opening is May 9th, and we are already doing a little bit of promoting with the Iron Mom Run. We're calling it kind of the weekend to bring your mom downtown and enjoy two great events. We were doing some advertising together, and we're also looking at including some information in each race packet that goes out. We have a flower vendor, Flower Ridge Farms, who's fantastic. She provides fresh bouquets at the Farmers Market, but she is currently growing little sunflowers, and hopefully they'll be ready, but for the race participants, they can bring mom down and get their free flower. And then we've got a lot of other promotions going on for the general public that day as well. The times this year, 7:30 to 3:30. We aren't changing anything there. The one thing we are pulling out and making clear is that Monday through Friday, there are a limited number of vendors out there. Saturdays are called Full Market Saturdays. It's the one day that we can promote, it's probably the most popular day of the market, but we do appreciate those that have the time and take the time to be out there during the week, if it's possible for them to. So, many of our farms and our artisans and local businesses have other jobs, they can't be out there Monday through Friday, so Saturday provides them with a great opportunity to be out there. And like I said, currently up to 30 vendors and more coming onboard. This year, we are having our celebration Saturdays, the same as we did last year. These are once a month, usually. We like to take a Saturday and really kind of promote it, theme it, include a little bit extra, live music. A lot of times, we have our samples out there, we have people cooking. There's just a lot more excitement in the air, and it's a more festive atmosphere. And this really kind of helps carry the market throughout the summer and kind of keep that momentum building. It also provides dates for people to look forward to, you know, and anticipate. So, new products this year, like the list says, I won't read them all, but we have so many wonderful vendors, I just keep saying that, but, you know, it always amazes me. I'm like, if, if you have a product, bring it in, we'll look at it. Everything from goat's milk soap to eggs, beef, pork, homemade lotions, lip balms. A lot of our farms are now selling in some of the downtown stores, they're selling at Midtown Market, and to me, that's a sign of success as well. We, you know, could not be happier for our farms and vendors that are now selling in other locations. We think that's great, and it just keeps that business cycle going. Okay. With that, this kind of keys into the second part of having partnerships. I don't know if anybody will recall, but last year, I kind of talked about what Paducah meant to me, coming here, and actually looking at it and seeing that this is a town that was created on the river. It's where two rivers come together, and it was built on that. And it reminded me of the downtown having the backyard being the river, you know, and what better way than to have barbecues and have celebrations and have festivals, and kind of keep that backyard perspective in your mind. Last year hit hard and fast, and we had lots of conversations. This year, I'm happy to present something that's a combined group effort that we've been working on. Paducah Parks, Main Street, Maiden Alley, the Carson Center. We've kind of put together a sneak peek of summer events, and just like I said, if you were to reach your hand into a bag of events and pull out a handful, this is what they are. It's by no means an entire list of everything going on. I know we've got a city calendar, we've got several wonderful calendars out there, and if any of you have looked at them, you realize that there are so many things happening. But this kind of gives people a snapshot of, you know, just some of the highlights of a summer in Paducah. And this is also one of your rack cards that you have. Couple of the dates will be changed on it, but this will be sent out to a lot of... Couple of the dates will be changed on it, but this will be sent out to a lot of different places, and it highlights, like I said, a combined group effort on events. So we have Paducah Riverfront Events, Summer Fun Downtown, Live Entertainment Meets the Riverfront. This is one of my favorite pictures. It was from one of our Live on the River events last year. It was just very festive, lots of people enjoying like the wonderful night and the sunsets. So we have Welcome to Our City Experience Festivities in the Heart of Historic Paducah with the scenic backyard of the Ohio-Tennessee rivers and also beautiful sunsets. Bustling businesses, fine eateries, and several stages both indoor and out accommodate a wide variety of performances. Our unique venue offers a perfect casual setting from music in the gazebo to summer celebrations, concerts, shows, and local music. Relax and savor summer in downtown Paducah where everything comes together. And that just kind of hit home to me because Mary said something very similar, you know, this city lets everything come together. And for those of you that didn't get a little card in the audience, this is just kind of the format of the one side of the card. Each organization is color-coded, so it's very simple and easy to read. And you'll find that literally, May through August, and this is, like I said, just one little handful out of that event bag, but most Thursdays through Saturdays, there's something to do and sometimes multiple things to do. And that's not including most of the weekdays. Paducah Park Services, we've got Live on the River, and we have the Riverfront Concert Series as just select features for some summertime fun. I love this picture down in the right-hand corner. This is one of our Live on the River. It's actually out in front of the Chocolate Factory, and the streets were just full of people just doing the free entertainment that we provided, and they were working on some art projects here on this table. And it's always, it's always great to see. You've got everybody from little kids to elderly couples to people that have been eating and are dressed up downtown at one of the restaurants, and they come out and they get their picture taken, and you know, they just had very wonderful, positive things to say. Paducah Main Street has an initiative where they're putting smaller venue music, and we are also partnering with them on a lot of these. And I think they started too with the Smashing Summer Saturdays and the Farmers Markets. We had musicians kind of back-to-back, some at the Farmers Markets, some in the gazebo, and then we have, of course, have the horse-drawn carriages that go back and forth. And then it's kind of taken off to some of those Saturday nights where there may not be big events outside in the streets taking place. It provides great music for downtown ambiance. You can still bring your lawn chair, but you can also enjoy it if you're just taking a walk or riding your bike or sitting outside at one of the local restaurants. Maiden Alley Cinema is another one of our partners, and Landy has listed a couple highlights because they do so many different programs on there, but I just love this picture because it really shows, you know, how many people really have a vested interest in the programs that this community puts on. And then we have the Carson Center. Fridays at 5:00 is a new initiative that is taking off this year. It is going to be all summer long at the Carson Center's Williams Family Terrace. Basically, it's for all ages. I give, maybe, you know, working professionals. Stop by at 5:00, kick off your Friday night, kick off your weekend, have a drink. They've got some acoustic music. It's basically just to start your weekend right. There's some beautiful views up there. If you haven't had a chance to just even simply go up there and take a look, it's, it's definitely worth it. So with that being said, I don't know if you want to ask questions when I'm done with everything, or if you have questions as we go along. Either way? Okay. All right. So then we get to the Riverfront Concert Series. I'm very excited about this. Last year, we had three. This year, we, it's been a blessing to be able to bump that number up to six. With everything that starts out, it takes time, I think, to grow. You know, it's a matter of word of mouth, marketing, community partnerships. But by our last performance of the season, the crowd would steadily build. We had a lot of people that heard about it after the fact and were like, I wish, you know, I wish I could have seen them. I heard about them on NPR, or, you know, I heard that they were on TV. And so really, I think that's the first part of the process of really getting the word out there. This year, we've had a chance to make some really great brochures that are going to be sent out to places. We'll have it, of course, on the city website. We'll have it on our Facebook page, and we're also doing other means of advertising. This year, like I said, we have six artists. It's on Thursday nights down at the Wilson Stage right there on the riverfront. That's also where we do the Fourth of July. It starts at 6:00, goes to 8:30. Usually, our nationwide artists that we bring in perform from 7:00 to 8:30, and we love to open up with local artists. And what that does is it encourages that partnership between the local artist and the artist that we bring in. And oftentimes, it's a great partnership because it takes a lot of work, you know, to climb that ladder in, in the music industry. So last year, it was very successful. I think they have lots of conversations and can learn from each other. And I will continue. This is a free concert series. I think that's one of the things that is, that's so amazing about the city of Paducah and the Parks Department is that we can put on these concerts for the general public so that you, anybody really has an opportunity. I mean, last year, we have people that get dinner downtown, and they come and they sit and they listen to live music. We have people that ride their bike on the greenway, and they stop and they listen to live music. We've got families that bring lawn chairs and picnic blankets and their kids. So you really never know what the crowd is going to be, but that is kind of perfect in its own way because you get such a great demographic and variety of people down there. Like I said, we've got six dates. May 28th, June 11th, June 25th, July 9th, July 23rd, and August 6th. Our first, I'll just announce those. Our first group is Harpeth Rising on the 28th. And all of our artists this year are also on iTunes, so that's great. A lot of them are on iTunes and Amazon and all of these other places that you can purchase their music or listen to their music. Parker Millsap was one of our big artists last year, and we had so many people that sent emails and called and said, I really wish I would, I would have seen him. I missed him. He's coming back this year, and he's bigger than ever. He is now four-piece, and he's moved up in an agency, so he's, he's really doing well. June 25th, we have a group called Humming House. I'm very excited, and I guess Carson Center called me, and they said, I can't believe you have Humming House. That's great, you know? And I'm like, I don't think I've released that yet. But each artist, when you bring them in, they will send their information and they release it. So they had already heard through the chains of command that they were going to be here in Paducah. Carci Blanton is another one of our artists. July 23rd, we have Don and Hawks. Don and Hawks, they were previously on The Voice that's on NBC, so that's pretty exciting. I saw them last year. I was like, they would be great down here. And I was waiting to get them this year. So that's something I think, just in our office, a lot of people are excited about coming downtown to see. And then August 6th, Horseshoes and Hand Grenades is a great, really great bluegrass band as well. Okay. And last but not least, try to wrap this up. We have Live on the River, the Sounds of Summer Series, which is Saturday from 6:00 to 9:00. And I don't have a slide for each one because I'm trying to go pretty quick, but we are currently working on the scheduling for that this year. We had a huge, huge demand for another youth night after last year and showcasing some of our local youth talent. We've got that again, June 6th. We are working with Allen's Music. We're working with some of the local high schools, and then we have various other youth that are going to be showcasing their talent downtown. July 4th this year is going to be kind of like a double feature. It actually falls on that Saturday, so we will have a Fourth of July celebration, and we will have a modified combined Live on the River event as well. Now, what that means is we are going to be starting festivities earlier this year. We're going to be starting at 4:00 PM to 9:15 fireworks launch. What that allows us to do is to have some of our talent and activities and music on Broadway and Water Street and up that direction. And then as well, we are also going to be using Wilson Stage, not only for our community band performance and our fireworks like we traditionally do in the past, but we are also going to have a band, an artist and a band come in. We're going to have some historical readings. We're going to have probably some dance performances, but they will be featured down on Wilson Stage. So that's pretty exciting to kind of keep that going. I know last year, we had beautiful weather, and so we had a lot of people out there, you know, as early as 3:00. Of course, we have all our food vendors and other vendors that are selling items. So I think it'll just make for a great celebration. And our last Live on the River, we have August 1st again. Last year, we had probably our biggest night, and again, it was pretty consistent with that as the time went on and the word got out. It was our last one of the summer last year, and we partnered with Big Brown Truck Pool for Special Olympics, and they were extremely pleased. They gave us a little plaque with the Parks Department on it and the city of Paducah and said, this was by far, you know, amazing. We had so many people, people that had never been downtown before, so we are definitely going to be partnering them, with them again on August 1st. And I am currently working with many groups, as I said, partnerships and churches downtown for also performances. So with that being said, there's so much more, but I will just leave it at that, and if you have any questions. Can't wait. We just need great weather.
Busy year.
Yeah, it sounds like you've worked really hard on this, Molly.
Thank you.
And we appreciate it, and I know all the citizens of Paducah and all the visitors that come to Paducah are going to really appreciate the wonderful summer that we're going to have downtown.
Well, I really appreciate it, and it's been a, it's been a great year and a half so far, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Fountain Avenue Park Development, Mark Thompson, Mike Muscarelli, and Monique Zuber. Are you going to speak first, Mark?
I'm going to start.
Okay.
But I'm not going to speak very long because y'all don't want to hear me. Actually, this, I do want to say that things start off with a plan, and got to give a lot of credit to Steve Irvin as our city planner, who helped really kick off this project by calling me into his office and said, Mark, I've got a little money that we can put together, and we need to put together a plan for the area between 13th and 14th Street, the former Thomas Jefferson. And so we started brainstorming, and he said, let's put together and let's get a landscape architect in here to start a basic design, and then we can go from there. Well, with that, we went, the city applied. You authorized us to apply for a land and water conservation fund grant. We received it, and we are, received $75,000 towards that, that will, we will match with our $75,000. That $75,000 with maybe about $10,000 more as we go through this, you will see, has grown exponentially with quality partners. And so with that, we would like to announce tonight that we have received a grant from the Foundation for a Healthy Kentucky, $400,000 to be paid to us over the next couple of years. And we're really excited about this because this is different from any park that we have. And so, which one am I hitting, Pam?
The right arrow.
The right arrow key. Okay. And we are investing in Kentucky's future. These were the names. We have come up with a whole lot of names. We've got to come up with a name, so when we, as we apply for other grants and everything, we are actually going to have to come up with a name for this park. So we ran through several and many others. I did even, there was Madison Green, but I know a Madison Green who played soccer with my daughter, so I don't know if we want to, she might appreciate that. But anyway, if you all know a guy named Harrison Green, I don't know, but here's, these are names, but we have to, we also will be looking and offering this as, you know, if somebody has naming rights, somebody wants to make a nice donation, or the city commission wants to come up with and name it after somebody. It'd be something that we need to do. That's one of those things. From Cheryl's standpoint, she's written up three different grants for this and has come, has given them three different names, so we are kind of scared, scattered. But the one primary thing that this is, a park dedicated to a healthy population in Paducah and healthy Kentucky. So that's one of those that we need your help eventually at that point, but we will be giving you input on that. What's this park going to have? Well, it's going to be a very green facility. It's going to have a large, great lawn that is the open playfield. It's, we're not going to necessarily put anything structured like a backstop or anything else like that. This is something that you can take and chase, have your dog catch a frisbee. You can catch a frisbee, that you get out and kick a soccer ball around, play some touch football, family picnics, church picnics, any type of gatherings such as that. It's going to have an inclusive playground. While we're talking about inclusive, we have our Boundless Playground in Noble Park. It has been a major success. Mike Muscarella was a major part of helping with that. But we want another inclusive playground area that, that can take some of the burden off, actually, off the Boundless in Noble Park. There'll be a third of a mile walking trail that'll go completely loop around. It's not going to be straight lines. It's going to zigzag in and out, and so it'll be a joy to jog, and it's going to be 10 to 12 feet wide. We're going to expand and improve the community gardens, eventually have an open market area which we can expand the community, the, our Farmers Market and take it on the road, and we'll have a location for that here. The eventual development of a spray pad performance area. We're not talking about the same type of fixed playground, spray pad that we have here. It's more like the ones that you may have seen in St. Louis that has the timers and shoots the water from the ground, but it will also then be able to be turned off, and we can use that as a performance area because we're talking about putting some berms around it where the parents can sit around, walls and berms, so the parents can sit around, watch their kids play, and then maybe watch a performance later. Eventually, public restrooms and a lot of benches and picnic areas. So we're here to provide a health park. We're going to combine work with the, with the Paducah City Schools, Park Services Department, particularly in our summer programs, and other agencies to educate and involve the people in becoming a healthier facility and a healthier city. And that is the primary. Eventually, and Steve, you may want to comment on this, as we see, as we go through and look at some of the pictures on the, on the outside of this, you'll see these red blocks. This is eventually going to become a combination living and retail space. Upper loft housing along with downtown, or downstairs, that might be clinics, might be businesses, might be a coffee shop, might be any number of items like that. So it's going to be a living facility as well as an open park. How would you like to have that as your backyard? So it's one of those really nice options that we're going to have here in the future. Here's the location for folks who don't know. It is putting, it's at a close proximity to three of our neighborhoods, Lower Town, Fountain Avenue, and French Town, and it'll be able to be used by all. It's in, within good walking distance. We do, and Mayor and I took a drive out. We've talked about fixing a few sidewalks. It'll really make that a much easier access to the, to this park. That'll be open and used for all. Here's the money. Now, you can see on the second group of numbers that right now, we have $610,000. Only 85 of that is a city commitment. We're also, on the bottom, you can see, and you've already applied for a Rec Trails Grant for $100,000. That will be included as part of that match, so that, that seed money of the $75,000 will be included as part of that match. So that, that seed money of the $75,000 has grown to that, could grow to that amount, and we'll know something before, I think by, about September on that, shouldn't we? Something like that? So that could easily be at $700,000 by this year. Now, you see the construction cost. Now, this is the overall construction cost. These are estimates at this point. There's a lot of soft costs in there, as you can see with contingencies, the mobilization bonding permits and all those, all those soft costs. But we wanted to give you a true and as accurate as possible estimate of what it could cost. With that, fortunately, we have somebody who's going to help us raise some more money. It's in the game plan. And here's your general timeline that we'll start with, we're, we'll be, we're doing the archaeological study now. We've put out quotes for that. The implementation of the CATCH education program, which Monique and Mike will bring some information towards you, for, toward, for you tonight. And then we're going to be working on redevelopment of our community gardens in-house this winter and fall. And then we'll have a design done hopefully by March of 16, bidding, construction, and then hopefully a whole Phase 1 construction, which will be a developed park, summer of 2017. Now, I know some of you all may have a question, what may, what's going to be in that first phase? Are we going to actually have something on the ground? Let's go backwards a little bit, where we have the list of activities, our facilities and activities. Out of this, the only thing that, the things that will not be included in a Phase 1 development would be the spray pad, the public restrooms, and the open market area, and some landscape shrubbery, that sort of landscaping and materials such as that. Pretty much, you're going to have a usable, developed park. The one thing that, and I, I did not touch on is our outdoor fitness equipment. They now make outdoor fitness equipment that is just like going to your local gym. You have ellipticals, you have weight machines, you have leg exercise machines, the whole gamut, that you can touch every part of your body. And that equipment will be in Phase 1, along with the other playground. So it's going to be a huge development in this part of Paducah, and it's really going to connect a lot of people.
And I might add, that exercise, that green exercise equipment, your, your body weight is, provides the resistance. There's not any plates or anything out there. So it's, it's a pretty unique design, about as functional as you can get.
It, it's really top-notch. It's state-of-the-art that we're getting with that. And they're actually getting these things with computers input into them and everything else these days. And it's all weatherproof. So it's really amazing what they're doing with this. This is the partners that drew together, and I will let Mike and Monique tell you about our first meeting and how that all came about. And we've got a, a strong partnership, as you can tell, with Baptist Health, Lourdes, the Purchase District Health Department, the United Way, and the City of Paducah. We couldn't ask for a better bunch of partners. Mike? Monique?
It's great to be here, and it's great that we were able to announce the $400,000 grant from the Foundation for a Healthy Kentucky, because we want a healthy Paducah. And what ended up happening, the Purchase Area Coalition for Health is a group of folks with the keystones being, you know, the City of Paducah, the United Way, Baptist Health, Lourdes, the Purchase District Health Department, along with other agencies throughout the region. And we were thinking, you know, what do we need to do? The foundation wanted to work a grant in Paducah, in the western part of the state, and we were trying to come up with ideas, and we sat down and said, "You know, there's that empty lot on the corner of Martin Luther King and 13th Street. Wouldn't it be great if we could put another accessible playground right there for the folks in that neighborhood? You know, let's, let's go ahead and contact the City of Paducah." Well, we ended up contacting the City of Paducah, and we got with Steve and Mark and found out they were working on a plan already. So it was just, the momentum was exponential. But I can't emphasize enough the coordination that the United Way has given this project, bringing us all together as a coalition, because they're our administrative agent for this grant, while the City of Paducah is the fiscal agent for the grant. So what we will be working on is continuing to work to reduce the effects that we've seen in our community health needs assessments. All of us have done that, Lourdes, Baptist, the United Way, and we found that obesity is the number one issue that we have to deal with, along with all of the issues that come with obesity, like diabetes, high blood pressure, heart disease, et cetera. And the other two areas are accessibility to primary care, and then the third area is mental health and substance abuse. So the park really is going to address physical activity and nutrition, because we're going to work, do I need to go on to the CATCH program?
Yes.
I can just go forward.
Yes. Right arrow.
The CATCH program is the Coordinated Approach to Child Health Program, CATCH. Now, I'm not going to belabor going through every bullet point. What this means is we're going to work with the schools in our city and in the county to help augment what the teachers are already doing, teaching nutrition and physical activity. And then we're going to give them a vehicle to utilize that knowledge at the park by having the, the gardens, the community gardens there, and working with the Parks Department, working with the UK Extension Office. We'll be able to teach the kids how to grow and create their meal plans and to exercise and have fun. And if you build it, they will come. Well, we're hoping that the children will drag their parents and guardians and grandparents there to watch them play and enjoy themselves and be healthy. What that does is reduces the risk of obesity and improves their ability to utilize what our teachers are teaching them on how to stay healthy. And so that's the focus of the CATCH program. And Kaiser Permanente in California on the West Coast has really utilized this program well. So we will go into the schools and get a snapshot of where our kids are, and then over time, we'll do a longitudinal study to see how the teaching and our playground are working to improve the health of our children. Do you want to talk about?
Sure. This is the list of the rest of the organizations that are involved in the Purchase Area Connections for Health Coalition. And as Mike touched on, those core agencies at the beginning are a great partnership, but I think this list shows a testament to our community that all of these organizations can come together and see that common goal of having a healthier Paducah. Mike also mentioned, you know, Baptist Health, Lourdes, United Way, the Health Department in the past, has done their own needs assessment, and one thing that we found was we all had the same results, which was encouraging, that it kind of validated our research that we did need to do something about obesity and prevention and health and wellness. But the thing that we noticed was, while we got the same results, it was a whole lot of time and, and effort and dollars invested in that. So another benefit of this coalition is that we will come together and in the future efforts, along with the City of Paducah, when we do need assessments and things of that nature, when grant opportunities like this come up, we've already got this infrastructure in place where we can all come together. So hopefully, in the future, this won't be the end of our, our funding for this program or other programs as well, because we have this infrastructure and a great partnership with all of these organizations in the City of Paducah, that we'll be able to move forward and get more funding to make Paducah a healthier, a healthier place. But we're very excited.
And lastly, as Mark had mentioned, those yellow buildings on the right would be excellent opportunities for a place like a federally qualified health center, like an FQHC, which is Kentucky Cares, you know, is one that we have in downtown, midtown, and we do have one on the south side. But could you imagine having a health center there, behavioral health, and dental health for all the folks that are there? With the Governor's Health Benefits Exchange, you know, people are getting Medicaid and they're getting taken care of. They're getting insurance and getting taken care of. That improves access to care. So that is a whole wellness center for our community. So we're really excited, and thank you for the opportunity of partnering with you to be able to do this together.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just, well, I don't have any questions, just, just comments. You know, when you read about communities partnering together from, we got a, I guess we got a preview of that with, with Molly's presentation of partnering with our, with our friends. And then you look at the number of partners here, a group of people seeing a, an issue and figuring out, you know, how can I, how can I do that? Well, how can we, how can we come together and, and improve the health of our, of our community? Which the ripple effect of that is, is lower healthcare costs for the individual because they're healthy. And I was talking to my wife earlier, you know, when you get 55 or 60 years old, you start thinking, okay, how can I help myself feel better? Because you start to appreciate those pain-free days, you know? So I, I'd just love to applaud you guys on getting together, putting a plan together, trusting the plan, and then having the right people around the table to pull the trigger on it. And I'm, I can't wait. I can't wait. That's my neighborhood. So I'm excited. I'm excited.
That's another piece we're excited about, is if you saw in that map, the three neighborhoods that it really connects, that sometimes may not interact with one another, that this part may be a place where all three of those communities can really come together and, and interact. Whereas obviously, health is our number one priority, that's kind of a residual effect, I guess, so to speak. So I was excited from a United Way standpoint to bring people together in that respect.
Well, it's, you know, that, that area is such a beautiful, large area, and it's, it's so good to see it used in such a way to create a better environment for people in Paducah, a place to, as Commissioner Abraham said, to live a healthier life. So we certainly appreciate your partnerships with the city and future, future partnerships.
Nice to do. You see Cheryl.
She knows, she might know that already.
Am I here? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, everybody? Oh, yeah.
Whatever you'd like.
Whatever you want, however you want. I got attention.
Yeah, you want us to come up there? We can do it. Yeah, we'll get the color.
Here, if I go down there? No.
You got it.
Yeah.
I didn't know you had a strategy to anymore.
Yeah, there's a reason.
I was just trying to take a picture. I didn't know you were, you know, just messing up your vibe, man.
Uh-huh. Get me a star.
I love that guy's beard, man. Oh, my gosh. I love it.
So on Sunday, I had the privilege to attend racial, a movie, Racial Taboo, which was a wonderful movie. Then we had, we broke up into discussion groups afterwards and had very good conversations about why we don't communicate better with each other. And while I was there, I met a gentleman. If, Tony, if you would come up, I just wanted to kind of segues into what we've just done. Tony is retired from the Forest Service.
Yes, ma'am.
And so he has a goal, since he's retired, to walk across the United States.
Yes, ma'am.
So would you just?
Sure.
Just quickly tell us what you plan to do?
I can do that.
Which charity you're working for?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I'm working, I'm walking for Make-A-Wish Foundation. It's something I always wanted to do, and I promised myself, we talked about, you guys talked about health earlier. I'm 56, I just turned 56, and I said, you know, if I have my health when I retire, which I still do, I'm going to do this walk. I'm retired, my kids are grown, I'm, I'm single, and I figure, you know what, it's time. If I don't do it now, I might not be able to do it tomorrow. And I appreciate those healthy days, like you mentioned earlier, Jim. Sure. And I'm going to jump out there and do it. My parents live here, and I'm passing through. We're leaving in the morning to go to Portland. They're going to take me and drop me off and watch me put my foot in the water there, and hopefully, they're going to meet me in California, Monterey, California, and that's my, my journey ends.
Well, we wish you lots of luck on your endeavor, and you have put email address here?
Yes, ma'am.
If anyone wants to, is that how they would make a donation to Make-A-Wish, or do you make it directly to Make-A-Wish Foundation?
Well, Make-A-Wish set up a website for me, and it, which is on my website.
Okay.
If you pull it up, you'll see it on there. And all funds go to Make-A-Wish.
Okay. Well, thank you, and it was so nice to meet you and your families here.
Yes, I have a, a two-person posse back there.
[laughing]
They support, they're supporting me, and I really appreciate you inviting me.
Yes, it's nice, nice to have met you.
Thank you very much.
Now, that is, that is so motivating, man. I mean, it, it really is. When you think about, you know, what can I do, everybody, like one person, and you know, what difference would it make? You know, I'm just one person. But when you, when you, when you tackle something like this, it motivates, it motivates me. I mean, I want to, I want to just start doing push-ups or something right here, you know? But, hey, Godspeed with you, man.
Well, thank you very much.
Be well, safe travels.
Right. The hard part is over. It was doing itinerary and doing turn-by-turn, and it took me months to do that. I'm ready to walk.
Would you, would you post every day with maybe the picture and a little narrative of what you've done that day?
Yes, sir. If I have communication, that's going to be one of the big issues.
How would we get, how would we get?
It should be on the Facebook or either my, my email. I have both of them on there.
All right. All right.
Well, we'll be following you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And Paducah's popping, I see here.
It is.
I'm from Albuquerque, and I'm, I'm just here visiting. I'm thinking, wow, you guys got a lot going on. I really enjoyed the racial, uh, uh, taboo movie.
Taboo. That was very good.
Which was awesome. And the breakup they had after that, and we had the discussion.
Right. Keep the conversation going.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I attended the one Saturday.
Yes, they said you were there.
And it was, it was absolutely wonderful.
They had a little over 500 total.
That's good.
To sit down and just have a conversation without the PC cop being in the room. And, you know, if you're irritated, tell me why you're irritated, and, and let's, let's see if we can work this out. Let's see what is a perception and what's real. And you can't do that when a person sitting across from you is afraid to talk because they're afraid they're going to hurt someone's feelings, you know? So it was really refreshing to, to have an open, honest conversation in real time, and no one flew off the handle. I mean, it was, and so it was very good. It was very good.
Something interesting, when I sat down with my discussion group, there were two whites sitting here, and then two blacks here and two blacks here, and I said, "Do you mind if I come over there and sit between you?" So I mean, and by the time, and I believe, were you in my discussion group? No, you were just part of the venue. But by the time it was over, everyone was leaning forward and really engaged, and it really was a good discussion.
Yeah, it was a nice weekend.
Yeah. All right. We'll go on to our meeting now. Commissioner Abraham with the minutes, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for March 24th, 2015, and March 31st, 2015, city commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye. We have several appointments tonight. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Joshua Tabor as a member of the Tree Advisory Board to replace Polly Laboun, whose term has expired. This term will expire July 26, 2018.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kaler in appointing Joshua Tabor as a member of the Tree Advisory Board.
Second.
Is Joshua here tonight?
He's here. He's here.
Hi, Joshua. Thank you for serving on the Tree Advisory Board.
Thank you, ma'am. It's a pleasure.
And I know that you had requested to be on this board.
Yes, ma'am. That's great.
So thank you.
Thank you.
These terms will expire March 26, 2019.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in appointing Bill Wells, Steve Seltzer, and Jenny Smith as members of the Paducah Golf Commission.
Second. Second. Sorry. Well, it's, I work together closely with Danny on these appointments, and we had several good names, actually, that came up, and a couple of the names that said they'd like to be remembered when other appointments come up. And so I think each one of these folks will make great board members for the Paducah Golf Commission.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Municipal orders. Commissioner Abraham, please.
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Madam Clerk. A very busy thing, it's getting into that time of year for all the summer help that we hire, particularly in the Parks Department. I would bring your attention to the very last line. We are promoting from the Parks Grounds Division David Jones, who's been a longtime member of staff in grounds at Parks, who is coming to City Hall to replace Harland Brezier, if that's possible, who retired last month to work in the codes division. Really proud to see that promotion into City Hall from the grounds crew.
Good man.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Municipal orders. Commissioner Abraham, please.
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Madam Clerk. A very busy thing, it's getting into that time of year for all the summer help that we hire, particularly in the Parks Department. I would bring your attention to the very last line. We are promoting from the Parks Grounds Division David Jones, who's been a longtime member of staff in grounds at Parks, who is coming to City Hall to replace Harland Brezier, if that's possible, who retired last month to work in the codes division. Really proud to see that promotion into City Hall from the grounds crew.
Good man.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing and directing the Finance Director to transfer $700 from the Commission Contingency Account to the General Government, Mayor, and Commissioners Promotion Account to be used to assist in funding a UNESCO Artist Visit be adopted.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application and all documents necessary through the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergent Management Agency for a matching grant in the amount of $25,976.80 for the Paducah Fire Department's 2014 Fire Prevention and Safety Program be adopted.
Second. Hi, Steve.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This is a grant that's available to us every year. We don't always get it, it's highly competitive, but it allows us an opportunity to apply for training and programming monies for programs that we already have in-house. It's not an expansion of services that we already have, it's just reinforcing the services that we have. It's geared primarily towards training and the assessments of our juvenile fire center program, so it just saves us from having to budget those dollars for those kinds of things, and if we get it, and continue the programs that we have in-house.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to obtain a 2015 Matching Insurance Services Safety Grant Award in the amount of $3,000 from the Kentucky League of Cities for reimbursement for the purchase of replacement cartridges for a gas mask be adopted.
Seconded.
Good evening to each of you.
Hello?
Hello.
Are you?
I am fine, Mayor, how are you?
Good.
Just as she said, this is going to be used to replace gas mask filters that we have to replace about every three or four years, and when we do so, we use the old ones for training, so it benefit for us.
And luckily, you don't have to use those very often.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order amending Section H Engineering Public Works Department to delete the position of master electrician and create the position of journeyman electrician of the 2014-2015 position and pay scale for the employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky be adopted.
Second.
Our master electrician, retired from EPW a couple of months ago, we've advertised that one as a journeyman. We think we can get it at a few thousand dollars less and essentially get the same job done, so it's a one-for-one replacement and add a little bit of a lesser pay grade. I believe we've already done interviews on this, so it'll be a subsequent meeting that'll be a personnel action for the hire.
Does he have to work with a master electrician, being a journeyman?
That is governed by state law, KRS 227, and ordinarily, yes, a journeyman would have to work under the direction of a master. We do have two master electricians that do work for the city, albeit in a different department, but I think our plan is for those things that would ordinarily require a master electrician, we will contract those things out. Mostly, this position will be what we believed with our previous masters, many of the ordinary functions that they were performing, light bulbs, changing ballast, stuff like that, wouldn't not require a master electrician, Mayor.
Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order amending fiscal year 2014-2015 pay grade schedule for the City of Paducah employees to create the position of journeyman electrician and abolish the position of master electrician be adopted.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Ordinances introduction, so we don't vote on any of these tonight. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the city to execute a First Amendment to Memorandum of Lease and the Third Amendment to Tower Option and Lease Agreement with AT&amp;T for the benefit of the city. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City Commission hereby authorizes and approves the City of Paducah to enter into agreements with AT&amp;T for the lease of space on the 800 megahertz tower. The lease of real estate located at 510 Clark Street at a rate of $1,632.50 per month for a period of five years, and they commence in March 1st, 2020, and each additional extension term exercised thereafter. The monthly rental will increase by 10% over the rent paid during the previous term. Further, the mayor is authorized to execute said agreements.
Second. Chief?
This is a continuation of what we've had in the past, where we lease space to AT&amp;T for them to use our tower to hang equipment on, that's located over here at 911. You heard the parameters of it. We had a little bit of a hiccup in getting it back to you. It gets modified from time to time, just to make sure that we had the ability to terminate the lease if we needed to. There was some language that was missing from the contract specifically for that ability, so we just had to modify that to get it back in there, to bring it back before you. We had it on the agenda a few weeks ago, but that was the hiccup that we had with it, to make sure we could get out of the lease if we needed to for some reason, so it's just a continuation of services that we've had in place for a long time.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting and investing in Kentucky's Future Incentive Award from the Foundation for a Healthy Kentucky in the amount of $400,000, and approving and authorizing the execution of grant agreements between the City of Paducah as fiscal sponsor and the Foundation for Healthy Kentucky to aid of the development of an outdoor health park in the Fountain Avenue neighborhood. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky, as the fiscal sponsor for the Purchase Area Connections for Health Coalition to accept and investing in Kentucky's Future Incentive Award from the Foundation for a Healthy Kentucky in the amount of $400,000 in aid of the development of an outdoor health park in the Fountain Avenue neighborhood, which project is generally known as the Fountain Gardens Get Fit Youth Wellness Program, and to enter into grant agreements with the Foundation for the distribution of the award in three-year increments. The ordinance approves the form of the grant agreements presented to the Board of Commissioners of the city, with such changes therein as shall not be adverse to the city and may be approved by the mayor, and further authorizes the Finance Director to make expenditures in an amount not to exceed $75,000 in three-year increments as a city share of the local cash match.
Second, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I believe there's already been a presentation, but if Mark or myself or Cheryl can answer any questions.
Well, I do want to thank you, Steve, and Cheryl, and Mark, for your hard work on this, you know, it
Absolutely.
Took the city working closely with all the partners, so.
Yeah, and this is actually a great addition to a lot of the hard work that's in part of the Fountain Avenue Neighborhood Revitalization Program. It's just going to continue on with that progress, so it's a great program.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
What do you all think about getting the public involved in helping with the name of the park?
Especially the Fountain Avenue Neighborhood.
Well, I mean, the whole city. I mean, let everybody
I was thinking about, I was thinking of everything when they were trying to figure out a name. I was thinking of everything, so.
Well, I had my name picked, but I thought it might be fun to get input from the public.
What'd you come up with?
Oh, I like the fountain green.
Well, I had a different one.
Okay. You might narrow it down from that full list to a few selections and let everyone know on it. And they might come up with a different name, that would be really good.
We should be working townly in there, town, city, you know?
So you're working it
Well, we'll get that done, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham, please.
Here. No, I'm just kidding. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving supplemental agreement number one between the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highways, and the City of Paducah, Kentucky for the Oliver Church Road Improvement Project Construction Phase and authorizing the mayor to execute same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby approves and authorizes the mayor to execute the supplemental agreement number one with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highway for additional reimbursable funds in the amount of $6,200,000 for completion of the Oliver Church Road Improvement Project Construction Phase.
Second. Wow, are we almost there?
Mayor Commission, this is the point at which we have been trying to get to for some time. We will have a pre-bid meeting on the 21st here in this chamber conference room, and we'll also have bid openings on the 24th for this, and then we'll be getting started.
It's of this month?
This month. I'm talking, yeah, April, excuse me, I'm sorry, April the 21st here in a few weeks and the 24th, so. And we have our reimbursement funding to move us forward on that, so we'll be funding the money and be reimbursed as we spend the monies, so that's our contract for that.
Which party are you going, will you start on first?
I will not attempt to sequence the project as, because the project extends from
You're going to do both of them together?
Right there at Harris Road, all the way to Carroll Road, and then the spur goes off and goes through the mall between Sears and Dave's Bridle, I believe, or Merode Navy, I don't know who's on the end there, and come in the intersection at New Hope Road. Again, I can't sequence the project for the contractor, but we do have in our right-of-way agreements with those people that we've purchased, very strict rules as far as the sequencing through the mall. We're not to do any work from November 1st till January the 15th of any year, because it's obviously the prime shopping season there, so I don't know whether or not the contractor will start there and try to complete that portion first to get in and out of that area, or whether he wishes to work on Oliver Church Road itself, so we'll see that. That's the way they, that's their trade sequence on how they make their money, is sometimes how they sequence their jobs.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby amend Section 2-645 Competitive Sealed Bidding Generally Invitations for Bids of Chapter 2 Administration of the Code of Ordinances to remove the 21-day maximum advertisement time period and to add the Internet as an alternate to advertisement in order to be consistent with KRS bidding requirements.
Second.
Questions?
This ordinance change gives us flexibility to extend bid timelines beyond 21 days, which occasionally makes sense in the instance of soliciting bids for our software replacement, a very involved solicitation, one that takes prospective vendors a lot of time to prepare a response, would be an example of where we would likely go beyond the 21 days. And the second component of this gives us the option of using the Internet, our website, as the place to post advertisements for sealed bidding. We currently and have listed our bid opportunities on our website for information referencing that which appeared in the newspaper in terms of the formal solicitation, the legal part of it anyway, and now we'll be able to do all of that on the Internet, which, among other things, will save us some money.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on now to Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau for specific services. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract for the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $25,000 to be used for marketing and promoting events and venues related to the 2015 American Pilgrims Society Show. This contract shall expire June 30, 2015.
Second. Okay. City Managers' Report.
I have just one item tonight. It's been the better part of three years ago that the former inspections Department was transformed, or began to be transformed, into the Fire Prevention Division. A lot of change, haven't taken place during that time in a continuous effort to improve
We'll go on now to Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau for Specific Services." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract for the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $25,000 to be used for marketing and promoting events and venues related to the 2015 American Pilgrims Society Show. This contract shall expire June 30, 2015.
Second. City Managers' Report.
I have just one item tonight. It's been the better part of three years ago that the former Inspections Department was transformed or began to be transformed into the Fire Prevention Division. A lot of change haven't taken place during that time in a continuous effort to improve the operation in all respects. So, from time to time, we've come forward and shared with the Commission significant activities and initiatives underway. So, we have with us tonight Fire Chief Steve Kyle and Assistant Chief Fire Prevention Chief Greg Cherry to give you an update on what's going on.
Well, good evening again. Multiple opportunities to come speak to you all tonight, so hope you don't get tired. We wanted to take an opportunity to just update, update you where we are, highlight some things that we have going on, and just show you some of the initiatives where we're trying to make every effort to continuously improve and enhance our service delivery. So, if you bear with me, we'll talk about some of these, some of these things as we go. Customer Service Survey, something that we've recently implemented in the last month or so. We have it both in paper copy and online for people to have an opportunity to express their opinion of how they've, how our interaction has been. We have received some of those back already. I'm pleasantly pleased to tell you we've, they've been positive of the experiences that they've had. So, we'll, we'll continue to review these and take any feedback that we get to try to continue to enhance our operation. Customer Follow-Up. Greg's been following up on jobs during and after the fact to get feedback from the contractors, owners, et cetera, to see how the interaction with our, with our department's going. And that, that showed fruits that labor. We've, we've encountered a few things where we've been able to work some items out. Others, it's just, they've been positive. I don't know that we've had anything negative in that particular aspect. We've encountered negative things, I'm not saying that. Just from, I'm just talking about from the aspect of Greg following up. That, that interaction has been positive. Phone calls has been a thing that's been highlighted for us throughout our time over there, getting those returned, people being, what people are being told, things of that nature. So, one of the things that we did to try to help enhance our communication is Greg gets copied on those return phone calls, so we kind of know what's going out the door, what people are being told, contractors, owners, et cetera, on their interaction. Group Email, this is something that we, we hope is going to really enhance our communication ability. We instructed our desk staff to start getting everybody's contact info as they come in the door for their project. That way, if we, if we have information that's got to go out on that project, it goes to everybody involved, the architect, the engineer, the owner. Unless they specifically instruct us not to include them, we're going to send it to everybody. Commonly, we find ourselves kind of caught in the crossfire on some of these things in, in the, in the notification of different individuals involved, and this just, this just eliminates that, we think, or that we're hoping. We've already gotten some positive feedback from it that, you know, they were glad they were included in the loop, that, that way they get to see how their project is progressing. So, we, we think it's going to be a very, a very positive thing. And really, we probably won't see anything from it. If anything, we'll see a reduction maybe in the confusion out there. That'll be the way that it, it comes back to us, we hope. But so far, that's been, that's been positive. And then we've been phasing printers into the cars to increase efficiency. They always get something, but, you know, the, the professional aspect of what we're leaving in the field probably needed to be enhanced. So, they've got the ability to print in the car, to leave something on site. That way, we're not scratching stuff out on just a piece of paper and somebody trying to read somebody's writing, et cetera. You remember, I came to you shortly after those responsibilities were assigned to me asking you for computers, and we've just continued to enhance that along. And, and it, we're, we're going to continue to do that as we have the opportunity to upgrade our systems to take advantage of the technology that's out there. This is just another item of that where we're trying to enhance our efficiency. Over the last year, we spent a lot of time trying to, trying to work on being more consistent, and I'd say it's our strongest, strongest thing we've done over the last year, and it's been our, at least our top priority in terms of focus. We started regional property maintenance meetings, and what kind of what that's turned out, turned out to be, and much to Greg's chagrin, is that we're the go-to folks in order to organize those. We've been working with Princeton, Benton, Fulton, Mayfield, just on issues that affect all of us. Unfortunately, we, we find ourselves in the position of kind of being the people to lead that, lead that pack. I guess you might say we've encountered a lot of these issues first, but it also allows us to bring some things to the table. We're, we're learning things from those communities, too, about things that they're experiencing, how they're handling it, and it gives us an opportunity to see if we're handling it the same way, so that, you know, people in the, in the, in the region are being treated the same way in terms of how the code is interpreted, actions that are taken. You know, we get into foreclosures in this, foreclosures and demolition and other things. It just allows us to continue to work on our consistency effort and, and to see how others are doing it in our, in our area. Well, in, in that as well, we're also scheduling a regional ICC training component where all of the communities that have been participating in the meetings, they're going to all, we're all going together to pay for the class. So, the International Code Council's coming to town, coming to Mayfield, actually, is where the training's going to be, and all communities are participating together to pay for the class so that everybody gets the same training at the same time. Because we've heard a lot about consistency, a particular focus has been spent talking about, talking with our sister jurisdictions. And when I say sister jurisdictions, I mean communities that are of like size that would experience problems from having the expanded jurisdiction that we have, like Bowling Green, like Hopkinsville, like Owensboro, those communities of like size, to make sure that, you know, as we encounter issues where we, we hear, well, we don't have to do it that way there. We can, we can talk about those issues and, and see that we're interpreting the code the same way, or enforcing the code the same way. We've run into a few things where we've been ahead of the pack again. Not so sure that's a good thing, but Moonshine Steels is one of those areas. We seem to have an influx in this area. And other municipalities haven't experienced the same influx that we have. That's a good thing. So, it's, it's created problems for us to try to work out and how to, how to classify those, how to apply the code to those that we've ended up having to work with other jurisdictions, and ultimately the state, to get interpretations to make sure everybody's doing it the same way. We drove to Frankfurt, what, a month ago, at, at our request with the State Fire Marshal, the, the State Building Code officials to get their interpretation on how they were classifying Moonshine Steels, as an example, in breweries. We found out that the State Fire Marshal's office wasn't really tracking exactly what's been going on, because they've been going on, it's been, they've been installed in smaller, more rural areas where you don't have as much oversight, and that we, we really raised the issue. Louisville, as an example, if you're wondering about them, the big distilleries are running those operations. They're already dealing with classified areas, UL-listed equipment, but the small operations, like what we see coming here, haven't been, you know, it's not Maker's Mark doing it. You know, it's, it's the local, local person getting into that business themselves. So, we've had, we had several issues to work through. It was a very productive meeting. We asked for them to provide a letter of interpretation that we haven't gotten yet, and so that, you know, we, it goes out to all jurisdictions so that everybody gets the same information, and we're all doing the same thing. Phone call recording is another thing that we've implemented as a result of the phone upgrade that IT did. We've got the ability to record all phone calls. We've, we've started doing a sampling of those to see what our customer interaction is like, and that's, that's proved to be beneficial. I've done some, and I think Greg's done some, too, where we're trying to do that periodically. There's no way we could do every single call. I mean, you, you just, it was a little bit mind-boggling to me to really see how many phone calls we get in a day's time. Too many to go through every day. But we can certainly do a sampling of those. As far as the, the storage and how long we're going to keep those, I've got to work that out a little bit. Don't have a policy on that yet, because it takes up a lot of storage, as you might imagine. So, we've got a little bit to work on there, but we've got three months' worth, I think, so far, three or four months' worth. And it allows us an opportunity to go back and look at something, if we need to, to figure out what we told somebody or just to see how we're interacting with the public. You'll see at the next Commission meeting, I think, for the Property Maintenance Code to come before you to adopt the 2012 edition. This is, again, a consistency effort. Other communities around us, what we found out through the Property Maintenance Code meetings, other communities around us have already adopted the 2012, 2012 edition. So, in order to, to stay consistent with what others are doing around us, we're going to, we're, we're going to bring to you to adopt the 2012 edition as well. As a part of our continuous improvement effort, we've, we've crafted a letter, the pattern for consultations and meetings. Been a little bit difficult to come up with something. They talk to a lot of folks every day about, you know, they just call to have a question, or, you know, they, they want some advice about something or help in understanding the code. This, that letter is not really for that kind of thing, but it is, it is for the person where we, we go meet somebody on site to give, you know, to talk about what their project would be like. Maybe they're not ready to do it, maybe they don't have plans yet. Sometimes it can be a long break between when we talk to them and when plans might eventually come to us, if they come at all. So, we've, we've done the first one of those in an effort to, to try to capture what we met with them about. It's as much for us as it is for them. It also provides us an opportunity to identify items or checks that they need to initiate down the road, like when they need to get a permit, when they might need to get plans, based on the information that they've told us. And it allows us to, to put in context what we told them about the project that they asked us about at that time. Because a lot of times, between the time that we had that meeting and the time that they actually submit plans or they, the project moves forward, it changes, as you might guess. So, it allows us to kind of memorialize what we talked about them at that time, what we were, in, in the context of what we were telling them the requirements would be, and if the requirements changed, it's because their project changed, okay? So, that's, that's our goal with that letter. And, you know, we haven't had any feedback after the first one. It was just an opportunity for us to try to get something out there, and, and we didn't get any, any feedback on it, and weren't really looking for a whole lot, I guess, at that point in time. But this, this was for a, a business that was going to have a phased project. They did something now, they want to do more later. Allows us to highlight that for them, what they did now, and then what, when they get ready to do the next step, here's some things you need to be thinking about. Customer Service Training. This is an ongoing, ongoing thing where we want to continually provide our employees, you know, the ways to interact with the public better. This particular training that we've got coming up in, in May is three days of training, and it, and it is done by the International Code Council. Didn't know they offered that. It was, I had engaged with a customer sales rep here locally that works for one of the hotels about ideas, about how to, how to accomplish that, and she suggested that, that we go to our professional organization for that. I didn't even know they had that kind of training. Wouldn't even have thought to look there, because it's, you know, I'm geared towards training and certification, not towards the customer service aspect of that particular thing. They have it available, they're coming in May, and they're going to talk about inspector skills, increasing their credibility, and we've got some leadership training in there as well for the inspectors to, or all of our staff downstairs, actually, to participate in and, and see where their role fits into the whole process. Something that's a draft in progress, that is not completed yet, but they've, they're getting close to, to having something for us to critique, is an informational handout and a website update. Les and our new employee Chad Clark, Chad comes from the LA area, so he had lots of things to choose from out there. Of course, it's night and day between, between the LA area and here, with that area being much, much more strict than we are here. But he had some ideas about things that we could put out there on the web that would allow people to research on their own, and step-by-step processes on some things, informational frequently asked questions, things of that nature. So, he and Les have been trying to craft something that would work for, work for us, both something that would be at the counter for people to pick up, but also on the website. I have, I have gotten some feedback myself in some of the, in some of the follow-ups that I've done about how our website's not that helpful. So, we're trying to change that, and hopefully we'll have something, maybe by the end of May, to, to publish that'll, that'll work better. And then presentations to different civic groups. Part of that, part of our ongoing effort is to get our message out there, you know, that call early, call often, and, you know, don't, don't hesitate to give us a call for a question. You know, asking questions or, you know, having that open dialogue is not a bad thing, it's a good thing. We don't need people fearing our personnel coming to the site to do an inspection. That's just a part of the process, and we, we don't want, we want good interaction with our customer base out there. So, that's part of the message that we're trying to get out there. The Rotary Presentation that I, that I did, along with the Board of Realtors, went very well. Greg did Kiwanis, and I think it went well as also. So, we'll, we'll just continue to put that message out there and, and try to answer any questions that we get and address things that pop up. While I have your attention, I want to talk to you just a few minutes about demolition, because, you know, it's budget time and that, this popular topic that always seems to come up. Just kind of where we are, we've completed 24 demolitions in this fiscal year. Owners have completed 25, so that was not, you know, that's not something that we did. Those were permits pulled by owners to demolish structures. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that it was a structure on the demolition list, okay? But several of them were. Those were structures that were foreclosed on, bought by somebody else, and then they demolished the structure after the fact. Currently, we have 28 demolitions pending that are permitted to be done, and then we, we have 117 structures currently on the demolition list, and those 28 are included in that 117. So, just to give you a little snapshot where we are. Demolition list is going to be a fluid thing. It's going to have things that are added to, taken away, but that's kind of where we are right now. Wanted to talk about communications for just a minute. You've heard me talk a little bit about that, or quite a bit about that so far during this presentation, and I just kind of wanted to highlight some of the challenges that we have. And I, I think you can see the graphic kind of speaks for itself of the number of, of people that are involved in the process and making sure that information is exchanged and everybody knows what's going on. And, and as a result of that number of people being in the, being involved in the cycle, we, we kind of get caught into that, caught into that, in the middle of things frequently, for good or for bad. And I just wanted to show you, or to highlight how difficult it is and why we are trying to focus so much effort on making sure everybody's in the loop and taking advantage of the technology that we have available to make sure everybody stays in the loop.
And you don't always have that many people in the loop, do you?
No, sometimes it's just, it's just the owner and us. Other times, it's the contractor and us, and, and then you see everybody. I mean, it's, it's anywhere from one to whatever's there. And sometimes there's more. You know, I didn't, I didn't put more, I didn't put everybody we have in there sometimes, but these are the most common ones that we have in the loop.
But the point is, there, oftentimes, there are that many players involved.
Yes.
They're not necessarily communicating completely, and you're endeavoring to try to increase that. But this is typically the number of players that are involved in the process.
In any large project, for sure, yeah.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
The, if I, if I'm an architect and I've gotten, and Commissioner Gault here, she's, she's, she's the owner, and we lay out, I draw out exactly what, what she wants. Going to our website with the, with the plans that, that she has, you know, we go there together. Can we access, can we access those building codes for this particular project from the website?
Not our website, you can't know.
Is there, is there a reason why you-
Copyrighted, and they want you to pay for that access.
The, oh, who, who's asking for it?
The Co- International Code Council does, yeah.
Okay.
Now, typically, the architects and, you know, sometimes the contractors, too, but most, especially the architects, would have, they probably paying for that access already.
Okay.
But, and no, you, you wouldn't go and get it for free. Unfortunately. It'd be nice if, it would help.
Well, that question was asked, and I didn't necessarily know the answer to why you had to pay for it, so.
Yeah, well, that's the way they make money.
Okay, I'm with you.
Selling code books.
And to clarify something for the public, too. Plumbing is not under your purview.
No, plumbing is not. That's handled by the state, so it's a completely different entity that you're dealing with there. HVAC we do, but it, I didn't put it on there, just, you know.
Health Department.
Health Department is separate from us, right? Okay, so, the process cycle's another opportunity where communications can sometimes become a problem. It's a little bit difficult to see, but I, I just wanted to, to show how there's so much opportunity for exchange of information to take place and miscommunication to happen, and I think that just highlights why it's a struggle. You have plan submission, we do plan- You have plan submission, we do plan review, you may have plan corrections and those corrections might be, that might have to do with the building, it might have to do with the fire protection, it might have to do with HVAC. So you can see there's three different contractors just right there with any of those corrections and then those submissions need to come back for the plan to be approved, for the permit to be issued. That's how it's supposed to work. Now, we frequently get a little bit ahead of that in an effort to help the contractor get started building. So we may approve the foundation for them to start work when we don't have all the plans. That in and of itself creates an opportunity for us to have problems, but it's our attempt to help the contractor keep moving to do work, okay? So that we're not, so that we don't appear to be holding up the job. We've got to have time to review the plan. It takes time to do that. In a perfect world, we would have the plan, it would be reviewed and approved before work ever started, but it never works that way. They won't start work before we ever get the plan, many times. So, I mean, and that's okay, as long as we can, you know, but you have to give us time to make that happen and, you know, time is money and we understand that, but it's hard to accomplish that, to help them in every aspect with the process that we have to go through.
So many times the holdup is not with our department, it's just getting that information to you.
Sometimes it's getting the information to us and, you know, depending on how, we're first come, first served. So, you know, your project, if you got part of it to us and then you wanted to come back and bring another part, you might be at the bottom of the line again, you know what I mean? So it's just tough to make, you know, to get all that stuff turned out as quickly as we can. We do it as quick as we can, but, you know, that being the stumbling block. And by opening the door to start work without the full set of plans approved, that's where that problem sometimes comes from. But, I mean, we do that to help get the job started. But, you know, there's lots of steps there and those steps allow lots of opportunity for miscommunication and that's why we're continuing to try to enhance the communication process so that everybody stays in the loop and involved of whatever obstacles may be Oh, well, yeah. Yeah, I hadn't even thought about that. Sometimes when plans are submitted, the bid's already been submitted and whatever corrections that we say need to happen weren't included in the bid. So that would, that starts a whole different discussion, but. But you see where we, there's a lot of trip flares out there for us in the process and we do, we do the best we can with the things that we have available to us to make the process go well. Admittedly, there are things that we can still do to make the process better and we're in the midst of some of those things with what I'm talking to you tonight about. The biggest technological aspect of that and increase in maybe some efficiency is yet to come. The enterprise resourcing, planning that we're doing for the new software will help, we believe tremendously, increase efficiency and our online presence to do things. And I think that'd be a big step forward in terms of making life easier for whoever. You can do a permit online, you can pay online, you know, all those types of things that you can't do right now. And then lastly, feedback. We want feedback, whether it be from you all, it be from the general public, whatever the case might be, let us have it. We want it. We would prefer it from the people involved in the job because it would be easier for us to run things to ground. Obviously, we take it from you all because you all get it and we want to answer whatever questions are out there, but if we could get it from the people involved in the job, it would allow us to run the ground what the real issues were because that's what we're going to have to do anyway, even if you all bring it to us. That's what we've got to do. We've got to dig into it to figure out what happened and address those things and allow us to continue to improve our operations. So we're excited about the things that we have going so far and look forward to continuing to make more improvements. What might your questions be?
Well, on the, I understand, I really believe that the customer service workshop that's coming up will help in, out there in the field when you encounter people. And obviously, we want to be, we want to be welcoming when it comes to business-friendly, you know, community and all. Now, a step, a step below that is your property owner that may call up about something in the neighborhood. This is not a construction site, this is maybe a perception of a code violation and those type of things. You mentioned a bunch of phone calls that you all get and I'm sure some of those are maybe some of that lower tier phone calls you get. That has to be, that has to be very challenging and I think with showing how the cycle works, I think that helps a lot, it really helped me understand what you were trying to lay out there. On a lower level though, on maybe a step below that, people call and they complain about this house next door and they may see it as an eyesore, right? Or when you get in there and you look at it, if you've got a criteria that it has to meet before any action is taken by our, by the inspections department, they may not mesh.
Right.
Right? So getting back to that person and letting them know, well, it's not really at that tier where, you know, we're not going to tear it down because it needs a paint job.
Right, yeah.
So it's challenging, man, it is and I think we've got the right guy in charge to kind of handle those type of things, but those are the type of things you hear on a lower tier, but, and I try to explain to people, you know, just because the house looks a little bit in disarray, it doesn't mean that the bulldozer's coming, so.
Well, I appreciate that understanding because that's pretty critical.
Yeah, it is.
If I knew people would find out we had a bulldozer.
Yeah, yeah.
Want that shit out, but.
Well, another thing that you can tell them is we can only do what our budget can withstand.
Right.
And you can promise them that there's much more out there than we have the ability to pay for. From everything, from tearing it down to mowing the yard.
Right, I understand.
Well, I think you've got some really good things that you've thought through the plan and I especially like the part about the communicating better, having a more clear understanding that will help people have a better understanding of what they need to do, what the process is, and as Commissioner Abraham said, that workshop on customer service, really good, so.
Yeah, I think the, to me, I'm proud of the work that's happening in the department, the leadership, confident and I'm glad to hear the statements of support on the part of the commission and I'm glad to hear that the presentation was helpful, especially the steps, the communications, the number of players involved. We do get complaints, it seems like we get a lot of them, but to understand that there is potential for a lot of miscommunication and that we are focused on trying to work with our stakeholders to improve that, I think it shows that not only does the leadership of this division remain in a continuous improvement mode, but I think they've even progressed to the point now of, okay, we've done a lot of things, but there's more we could do. What might that be? And I think they're showing an ability to be self-critical, if you will, and ask for that feedback and to take it and to act upon it. So I think that's a tremendous sign of the level of leadership and progression and cultural change that's taking place in that department. It is highly regulatory, that is a fact and we're not going to escape that. It's a matter of how we go about delivering the service and the philosophy that we have, which needs to be and everybody down there understands, what can we do to help you achieve what you want to achieve in a way that's responsible to you and to the public and to public safety, quite frankly, which is the overarching theme of that department.
Well, and ultimately, you know, it's not just public safety, we protect the owner at the end of the day. I mean, a lot of times we're seen such as an impediment to the development of the process and money that has to be spent to meet the code, but at the end of the day, that's what protects the owner and their investment in the property that they've constructed or built.
Point.
And, you know, that, it gets missed a lot, you know, and that's okay, but I mean, that's a harder part to see because it's not anything you put in your hand.
Well, I think you need to put that on the front of a pamphlet.
Yeah, maybe so.
That's a good point.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The only other thing I have is a request for executive session and I think someone will make that motion at the appropriate time.
Okay, I would just like to say tonight that we have made many phone calls and written many letters and as you may know, the Paducah Mail Processing Plant was scheduled to be closed down on April the 10th, but the closing was halted as it took place. It seems that enough political pressure was applied in the last days to prompt renewed conversations between congressional leaders and postal headquarters. So the result was that 15 plants across America, including Paducah, that were scheduled to close were at a minimum delayed. So I would just like to ask everyone to continue to contact your representatives to request that the Paducah office stay open. And we are sending a letter to Senator McConnell and Congressman Whitfield, as well as Senator Paul, thanking them for their work in lobbying to keep these post offices open. Any comments?
I just, well, not on that, but that's a good thing, that's a good thing. Bob Holman passed away and he, back in, I first met him, I think, back in 96 when I was director of VIP Street Ministries and he was, he really helped out with that and known his daughter Claudia for quite a bit, quite a while. And I remember when the Holman House was over on Park Avenue and then it moved and a lot of people was wondering, you know, what's going to happen? You know, he was there for so long. It didn't take him long and he had that, obviously, that great customer service and those customers followed him right over on the south side. And that wonderful chili sauce that he had there right by the cash register, I fully enjoyed that when I went by there. So our condolences goes out to his family. The other thing is Captain George Johnson.
He started a garden?
No.
Oh.
Captain George Johnson of our police department was, I'm trying to read my notes here. Only 20 officers a year was, are invited to this particular program and he was the highest, he had the highest grade point average in the class, so that's pretty distinguishable for our Paducah Police Department. And just want to give a shout out to him for a job well done. And also, if, could you, could you come up, sorry? Yeah, yeah. No, 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 the police officer in the back.
[laughing].
I'm sorry.
George is also doing a garden, too.
He is, I'm sure.
At his house.
Okay. Just wanted to, a friend of mine mentioned that he had heard that our police department is putting together a pamphlet just for, as far as our public interacting with our police department. And could you talk a little bit about that?
I saw that today on our Facebook page. I haven't been directly involved with that, but I was reading some of the stuff that they have put on pamphlet. I think it's going to be about the size of a note card, front and back. It kind of gives you some things to maybe ask the police officer when interacting with them.
Right.
And some things to do and not do and just to have a better all interaction, whatever the case may be, whether it be speaking with them, traffic stops or an arrest situation, what to do and what not to do.
Those types, that's great. I think if you get those things in hand of a public, it gives them an opportunity.
Absolutely.
That's a kind of a stressful situation right there, so anything that we can do as a department to calm that down is an asset. So applaud those efforts from PD.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Who has the executive session?
Did you have comments? Was it public comments?
I don't believe we had any, any public comments tonight.
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS 61 period 8101B. Issues which might lead to the appointment, dismissal or disciplining of an employee as permitted by KRS 61 period 8101L. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61 period 8101G.
Second.
City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. And we will not be coming back. Meetings adjourned.